How it be?
Hundreds of people are terrible.
How it be seven thirty we're calling meeting to earlier with special agents? Now stay off. Training for business. No, I said stay allegedly. I'll say what we do.
I'm going to.
Thank you.
The product was extinct. One nation under God is original with liberty and justice for all.
It was late. That's where we were. It's from the law. It exists.
Do I?
So I don't see anything. And it's like, sorry, get that. You know, you're coming. The by table. And I took them to the team.
For choice of.
Then you sell.
No, I did.
All right, everybody review the minutes that Amy sent us in. Anybody have anything they'd like changed or things to be changed? I'd like to make a motion and we accept the minutes. Now I'll second that. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes presented by Amy. And second, any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carried. Okay, Amy, you have first respondents?
Yeah, this was from the U D C. I know she emailed it to you also. I didn't know if you saw it.
Yeah, but it didn't mean anything to you. It didn't approve anything or anything. Did it?
No.
Could you answer it?
No.
Me either. Okay. All right. Any old business, anyone knows what we didn't lose. All right, on to new business. We had requests from Boy Scouts of America. We have a representative here. Do you wish to tell us what you're doing or you want me to go through?
I can give a general of what I was told. Uh, we have a property line adjustment on our land sale. It was point six of an acre. Um, it ran through what was in our move through a bathroom, so we adjusted the line. Uh, I believe it's a hundred and fifty feet out from the bathroom. Uh, three hundred and fifty feet wide. Uh, and so there is no longer, there was either campsite or the bathroom. If you're showing what we.
Okay, and we're getting an application from the Conservation Fund since they're gonna get land back to you. And I can see how this happens. The magnetic north changes and you could have these seeds from hundred years ago and you bought them from my grandfather and so on. And so you missed the camp slightly. I remember going through the same thing myself. But on your end, yeah. I gotta, I gotta speak to them about that. Okay. Been posting the same line for seventy years and I can't say no line. I've been posting line, I guess doesn't make it true. I guess not. All right, anybody have any questions? You all got an application. So you wanna read it or you just wanna? I think we can, I read through it already.
Yeah, we read it already.
Okay, so we're to part one, short form environmental assessment.
Okay, am I reading it?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, project is sponsored information to conserve Conservation Fund. The name of the action or project is the Greater New York Council Boy Scouts of America Lot Line Adjustment. The project location is off Bristol Lake uh, Lake Road, town of Tuscon. The brief description of the proposed action. Proposed lot line adjustment to find existing Greater New York Council's fossil with additional point six eight acres currently owned by the Conservation Fund. The purpose of the lot line adjustment is to comply with the setback requirements and to provide a buffer for a campsite from the boundary lines. The applicant sponsor is the Conservation Fund and their address is P O box two five six, Freeport, Maine, oh four zero three two. Number one, does the proposed action only involve the legislative adoption of a planned local law ordinance, administrative rule or regulation? No. Number two, does the proposed action require permit approval or funding from any other government agency? And they said yes. If yes, list the agencies, name and permit or approval, the Town of Tuscon Planning Board. Number three, a total acreage of the site of proposed action is carrying six to eight acres. Uh, total acres to be physically disturbed? No. C, non-applicable. Number four, check all land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action. They check rural, commercial and forest. Number five, is the proposed action A, a permitted use under the zoning regulation? They checked yes. B, consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? They checked yes. Number six, is the proposed action consistent with the predominant character of the existing build or natural landscape? They checked yes. Number seven, is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? They checked no. Number eight, A, will the proposed action result in substantial increase in the traffic above present level? They checked no. B, are public transportation services available at or near the side of proposed action? They checked no. C, are any pedestrian accommodation or bicycle routes available on or near the side of the proposed action? They checked yes. Number nine, does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? They checked yes. Um, let's see. Number ten, will the proposed action connect to an existing public or private water supply? They checked yes. Number eleven, will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? They checked yes. Does, number twelve, does the proposed action, does the project site contain or substantially contiguous to a building archaeological site district which is listed on the National Estate Registered Register of a starred places? Or that has been determined by the Commission of the New York State Office of Parks Recreation and Star preservation to be eligible for listing on the state register or starred places? They checked no. B, is the project site or any portion of it located adjacent to an area designated as sensitive for archaeological sites on the New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? They checked no. Number thirteen, does any portion of the site of proposed action or lands adjoining the proposed action contain wetlands or other water bodies regulated by a federal, state or local agency? They checked yes. B, would the proposed action physically alter and approach into any existing wetland or water body? They checked no. Number fourteen, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or likely to be found on the project site. Check all the that apply, forest. Number fifteen, does the site of the proposed action contain any species of animals or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Is, should it be?
No. I don't think the Eagles.
I don't, I don't.
Turn around, isn't it?
No.
Other side of ninety seven.
Yeah, I thought about that. Number sixteen, is the proposed site located in the hundred year flood plain? They checked yes. Number seventeen, will the proposed action create stormwater discharge either from point or non-point sources? They checked no. Number eighteen, does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impalement of water or other liquids? They checked no. Nineteen, has the site of proposed action or adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? They checked no. Number twenty, has the site of the proposed action or adjoining property been the subject of remediation ongoing or completed for hazard waste? They checked no. And then they certify that the information applied above is true and acted to the best of my knowledge. It's the applicant's signature, uh, promise or offers, V V of a conservation fund.
All right, perhaps now we should take a little look at the map and see exactly what we're talking about.
Yeah.
And then look up at the top of that. We can see it.
Yep.
Why?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
You got it?
Obviously, we're using the round numbers. But we believe that. But you're dealing up here, there'll be another little parcel taken out of.
Over there?
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
No, you're gonna get it back to here.
Okay.
Right here?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right there. Zero and writing. Put your little hand on it up there.
You wanna put your hand up? Put your little?
There you go.
So that can verify to you that it's a I would not describe parcel in the middle of a very big parcel. Two very big parcels actually. Just stick in the dip, like you.
Oh, we want to run it to a break. We could read it. You want me to read it? We should make a motion.
Make a motion to approve secret part one. I'll make that motion before we approve the secret part one. No second one. We have a motion on the floor to approve the secret part one for the Conservation Fund to transfer to Boy Scouts of America. And I know I didn't say their name properly, but you did. Uh, any further comments on that?
No.
No. Motion to approve the seeker?
I, I.
Opposed? Okay, so now we have part two, which you'll, you'll fill it with a frame. Let's pick the media.
Okay, he can read a minute.
Yeah, you were good. Come touch. My own little marketing here, we're gonna do it electronic. You'll do, you'll do it electronically.
Okay, all right. Uh, short environmental assessment form, part two, the impact assessment. Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use plan or zoning regulation?
No.
No.
No? Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of use of land?
No. No.
No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community?
No.
No. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that affect the establishment of a critical environmental area?
No.
No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic? Or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking or walkway?
No.
Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy? And it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities?
No.
No. Will the proposed action impact existing, A, public or private water supplies?
No. No.
Public or private wastewater treatment utilities?
No.
Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historic archaeological, architectural or aesthetic resources? Another no. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? For example, wetlands, water bodies, groundwater, air quality, floral and fauna? Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding or drainage problems?
You're gonna make that one. The chairman's a wise guy.
Well, that should create a hazard with environmental resources for human health.
No.
Have you ever seen it's probably the opposite of that.
No, that's exactly.
All right, the short environmental assessment form, part three, determination of significance. Since we didn't have any objections to part two. I guess we can just check the box here.
Yeah, the second one.
Check this box if you have determined that the information above and supporting documentation that the proposed action will not result in any significant adverse environmental impacts. So we will check that. And that's it.
Name and agency.
Name and lead agency is going to be the Tuscon planning board.
Yeah.
Just, you don't have anything?
They can read my handwriting.
Yeah.
Print or time, name of time. Name. Signature of preparer. That's me.
Mm-hmm.
And you're gonna sign this printed one too.
All right, print timer.
You don't have to type that in. He'll sign it when you print it. Okay?
Okay, okay, can we make the motion?
Okay, you may.
Okay, we make a motion to accept part two and part three. And that says the lead agency?
Yeah. But.
Yes.
Yes, we need to be lead agency.
Okay, okay, I made the motion.
All right, I'll second it.
Okay.
Okay, we have a motion to be lead agency and to accept seeker part two and three. Any comments? Second also made?
No, that's the only comment is since everybody seems to be on board, Boy Scouts and the Conservation Fund.
Yeah.
I don't see why there is.
Yeah, and it wouldn't make sense to have a facility that the people can't use because it's over the line.
That's right, correct.
Okay, motion is on the floor. Any further comments? Prove?
All in favor, I'll say aye.
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 Any objections?
No.
We'll sign off on that. Now, what do you have in the line of maps?
Uh, I have the Mylar.
Line up here. Did they send you with other Mylar for the last time yet?
For the, no. Yeah, it's come out.
Uh-huh. There's someone with a mystery.
Okay.
Well, I guess we're, you only brought one?
That's all they gave me. My note says that we're supposed to get five back.
Yeah, well.
Well, I, that's what I said when they gave me one. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Very interesting. We wanna keep one too.
Yep.
I guess we need our stamps. We can save and put a stamp on it.
Okay.
Good job.
Good job.
Good job. Just hope. I'm sure, absolutely.
Sure. You're getting with.
Okay, now just. Try to help.
Make sure that. Take it as sound. Okay.
Let's go. Yes, and it's.
Mm-hmm.
Good to see the welding. Let's move it here for a moment. Do we have a number, Amy, for a people?
Yeah.
Would you like to assign one?
You want to do it O two?
I think, I think it's O two because we did the bank.
Mm-hmm.
And did we do anything else?
No.
I'm doing nothing. So two O two, five O two?
Two.
I did it the other way around. Twenty twenty five is the same numbers.
Okay.
Just a little bit different spacing. Might be nice to sign two separate here.
Oh, am I signing two? All right.
And you make sure that they get us some more?
It, how many, so how many more Mylars do I, I can?
We want a Mylar to keep. You get this one. Maybe keep this one until they bring that one in. Maybe that's a good way to get it.
That's, that's fine.
Yeah, I think that'll be better. We'll keep this. Then when other ones come outside, they can get contact with me.
Perfect.
Tom's been, Tom's been by before, so he knows where to go. Yeah. And bring it to him and sign. Yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you guys.
Well. So we. We got the rubber band?
Yeah.
All right. You're taking it here. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.
I don't know, we should use these, I guess.
Should we use that?
Yeah, we can. It's just saying, sure we have enough. Well, we don't need any. No, that's what I'm saying. I'm sure we have enough. Yeah. Yeah, please, if you gave us before. And we haven't done, so we need to see. Yeah, okay, okay. So right here, yeah. I'm trying. Not amazing, we can get at this. We can hear more. Up in front, you got one? There you go.
There you go.
You get to. Yeah, I got him.
How many do we want?
We're gonna do. Be five?
Five, there you go.
He needs five and we're gonna keep. You'll keep the more.
We'll keep an hour.
We'll keep a copy too.
Okay.
I don't know if we even keep my last, I mean, we stopped kind of. It's hard to pull the.
Do you wanna just keep giving back the Mylar then? We're gonna give it back. Oh, Mark?
You're gonna do the.
All right.
People, man. Okay. Hey, Brandon, another stack, please. Right there. Tell you what. You put them on and then they're just signed. That's in there. Okay. Oh, I thought it could be a stamp. You know, stamping within my job description.
Yes, it is.
You want me to give you do a job? I'm gonna have to renegotiate.
Oh, my goodness. Stop the people.
You're gonna give you a different job description when you wish you had this. Yeah. Retaliating because I kind of gonna file a grievance. You can start putting these numbers in.
Oh, okay. I found.
I did them already on. Delegating authority, huh? Yeah. We're gonna need a company. The more I use it, the worse it gets. So I get the signature done, that's it.
Okay. Okay, don't come.
Well, hurry up.
Please, people.
Give him a new job, he gets very.
That's right.
Um, keep it as it is. What did you do, Stan? Broke your, I broke your stamp. Oh, it was good. You don't need that piece, do you? I don't think so. Hold on my own straight. I know you sure surprised me last night when you landed on me. I'm like, what's going on? Yeah, sure are comfortable. I think I took one for the team. I'm just saying.
Thank you very much.
Listen, if Ken Klein had been fifteen minutes earlier, it would have been him sitting in that chair, so. Yeah, well. The growth. Oh, really? Is that how this is gonna go? Okay.
You took one for the team.
He is a little taller than I was. About a foot shorter and so.
We salute you.
I really couldn't imagine what was going on when I went flying.
We're good.
It's a problem with gravity, so.
Not if you're getting good practice.
I don't need to. And the bat Mylar?
Will be two. They got here seven, so they won't run out.
Yes, two.
Yeah.
Answered eight. Okay. Wait a minute. To Amy.
That's all we need in Miami, right?
Yeah.
We need stuff, get your second. Don't forget that.
Yeah. I'm wondering.
Okay. Next step. Upper Delaware Hospitality for a deck. Does anybody have a sticker for this?
I do not.
I did not see one.
I did not see one, I don't know.
It was, um, it didn't include the secret for, uh, for the initial present, you know, the initial presentation.
Okay, would you like to?
Thanks for the.
Okay.
Okay, good.
Good.
Hi, uh, want me to stand?
No.
Your government.
No.
Um, my name is Frederick Toomey. I am the president of Upper Delaware Hospitality. I own a, a series of wine bars called Bar of the Lotte in New York City and at LaGuardia Airport and here as well. Um, we're located at one seventy four Bridge Street, Milwaukee. And, um, we, we started, we bought the building in two thousand, I'm sorry, twenty twenty. And then we did construction between the summer of twenty twenty through the spring of twenty twenty one. And at the time, we, um, when we were building the roof, uh, we thought it wise, since we didn't know when the pandemic was ending, that we should perhaps be ready to have to have seating on the decks as we're building it out anyway. So, um, anyways, you probably know, we've been through a little bit of, of drama with some issues with neighbors and third, but nonetheless, we, we are here to ask for a uh, a special use permit to add the debt uh, that's been unused. And, uh, that's basically the story.
I, I, I just wanna add to, my name is Michael Davidoff. I'm attorney of Montessori. And, uh, this has a history, as you probably all know. The bottom line is that, uh, when the approval was granted for the, uh, change over to the bar, there was some confusion as to whether or not it was included to be for the roof or not. The determination was made at the time that it was not. The understanding was that when and if they wanted to expand to use the roof, that they would come back to, uh, request additional modification of the site plan to also improve the roof. But that's why we're, we're back here at this time because that's what the understanding in the agreement was.
When do you feel we'll get the secret and parking documentation and so on? Um, calculation?
Well, we were hoped that if you felt a public hearing was necessary, that you would schedule it for next month and within the two week timeframe that you require, uh, prior to that, it'll, it'll be submitted.
Normally, before we schedule a public hearing, we review all the steps. So that's not really quite perhaps the way we should do it.
Well, you know, uh, whatever your procedure is, I, I, I'm not clear on that. I, I did it other planning boards where, uh, so long as the secret was there to be reviewed for the public hearing, uh, that that was sufficient, uh, however.
But. We don't have an open meeting before the public hearing to consent and review it and accept it. So I don't know how that's gonna work out.
Well, it could be done at, uh, at, prior to the public hearing at, at that, at that meeting.
Yeah, but our meeting is not open at the pub before the public hearing. Yeah, but our meeting is not open at the pub, before the public hearing. You know, our meeting opens at seven thirty, the public hearing is beforehand.
Well, you can have the public hearing, uh, you can have the public hearing and then have it, or you could, uh, schedule the public hearing, uh, right after the opening meeting. I mean, the, all the secret, all of the secret was done, uh, at the, for the initial application.
Right.
Uh, true.
But we need to review parking and all that stuff again, because now we're going to have more square footage and be decided with what the parking plan's gonna be.
Yeah, we're gonna be asking for the, uh, waiver, which could be your, in your rules, in your, uh, um, law.
Well, does anybody else on the board have an opinion of if we can go forward or if we need to wait for our information?
Because I don't think that this is gonna change the secret issues.
No, but we need to review the secret. We need to determine where to lead agency. And then we set a public hearing after that. And we need to review the parking and so on, so we know what we're dealing with.
We're just gonna have to go off of the public hearing.
Right.
No, no, this.
I think they're noticing how if you have your public hearing, you don't have to approve it the next meeting.
Right.
But you're gonna hear from how like what they're.
Right, exactly, yeah.
Do you recommend, Michael, that we meet and then just hold the public hearing like fifteen minutes later? So we can do the secret and so on first?
Yeah, that, that, that's definitely, uh, uh.
Well, you, we might, at that point, I don't know the business.
Well, yeah, I know. But then we would, uh, just cancel all the concerns, start a hearing and then return the, return the meeting.
Yeah.
So we would entertain the old business, which this would be. And then if there is any new business, we would, that would follow the, follow the public hearing. Reopen again. Public hearing.
Yeah.
Alright.
Are you comfortable with it?
You're comfortable with that?
Yes.
Okay. Because you may have to defend it.
I've been already in a court of appeals defending.
Well.
I understand, I appreciate it.
Yeah, well, we don't wanna back ourselves into a corner.
Understood.
Okay, so we can declare we'll be lead agency on this tonight, I believe.
Okay.
And I'll make a motion that we clear ourselves the lead agency for the application from, uh, Upper Delaware Hospitality.
I'll second that.
We have a motion to be lead agency for Upper Delaware Hospitality, special use permit with a second, any comment from board members? Um, all in favor?
Aye.
Against? Okay, so we're lead agency, and we get our secret, we'll be able to read it and go through it and be good there. Now, we're going to set a public hearing. We want time to open the meeting. Do a few things, so maybe eight or seven forty-five? Do a public hearing to open?
At what time?
Seven forty-five. They'll give us fifteen minutes to do our minutes and pledge and so on, and do the secret review.
And if we run over, we run over.
Yeah.
You know.
They don't wanna wait, they can go home.
Yeah.
Right, okay.
So, you gotta send out notices to all the neighbors within five hundred feet again. And tell them that at eight forty-five, you'll be here for the public hearing.
Seven forty-five, that's it.
Thank you. Seven forty-five. And what date is that?
Eight twenty-seven.
Now, that's also grievance day, so we need to change our meeting. Because grievance day is set by the state. Fourth Tuesday, right?
Yes, that's correct.
So we can't really change that. So do we want to meet? What's going on Monday, Crystal?
Uh, that's labor.
So I guess we'd be best off going to Wednesday, the twenty eighth. It's this place available then?
Okay. Is it?
Can you check that?
Yes, to be said.
Not just this one?
Okay.
Okay, so Wednesday, the twenty eighth at seven forty-five.
A public hearing, the actual.
And the actual meeting will begin at seven thirty, as usual.
Yeah.
Is that the day of the Chamber of Commons meeting too?
No idea.
I think, well, do they have a chamber meeting?
They don't have any.
Okay.
We should, anybody have a conflict for that day? That we know of?
No.
Okay.
Not that I know of.
Your appointment. Just like to ask.
Nope.
Yes.
Anybody here who thinks Mr. Barry?
And then we'll publish for the public hearing, but for the change.
I don't know.
See, decide to quit?
No, I told me.
Neither.
I won't.
Um, do you need a resolution to change your meeting date?
Yes, we do.
Soon as they finish with their calendars, they'll make one.
So what time, the meeting is what time?
Seven thirty.
Seven thirty, seven thirty.
Okay.
Public hearing, seven forty-five.
Okay.
Mike, you wanna make a resolution, change our meeting date?
I will make that resolution, that we, uh, next meet on May twenty eighth.
Real second.
At seven thirty with a, uh, public hearing to follow at seven forty-five.
I'll second that as well. Okay, we have a motion on the floor to change our meeting date due to the conflict with grievance day.
Uh huh.
Uh, any comment?
No.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Like post? Alright.
I'm sorry, right? Good, go ahead. Alright, what do you need?
I was just, I was gonna say they used their initial secret of that building.
We don't have the original secret. I don't really either.
You're talking about the original.
Back to.
Yeah.
Yeah, but that didn't include, that didn't include the deck.
The deck or the, um, or the.
Yeah.
Yeah, and then, you know, with all the actual people, you have to have the.
Big document we had last time, you've reviewed and gotten rid of many complaints in that.
We can't.
The parking plans.
Yeah. And then, yeah.
Yeah, we're gonna submit additional parking plans.
That's right, okay, good.
Yeah.
Just wanted to read your prepared.
No, no, I didn't.
No.
I understand. Pursuant to the stat requires, or the waiver that you need additional, uh, sketch it.
Yeah.
Anything else?
Okay, we, you're good?
Fine, thank you.
Okay.
Alright, alright. We're good, right?
I'll make a motion, we call it a reading.
What about our board comments? Do we have any board comments?
Alright.
Go right ahead, make any comments.
I think, uh, we had a productive session.
Okay.
We have our way through our little quandary here.
I think so.
We're, we're, it's no I in team, right? That's how.
Started with the clock, it's supposedly seven thirty, it must have been. Have you already done our meeting reminder?
Yes, we did, and then the adjournments.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we adjourned.
I second.
Second.
Bring us the green receipt cards.
Yeah, the green receipt, uh.
From, from those certified. Yeah.
Yes.
Three cards, yeah. You have to do because we're at five hundred feet.
Five, five hundred feet.
I have a church.
Um, no.
You got sound behind, I think Debbie would be included, five hundred feet. That's maps out, you might go up the hill. Anyway. Actually, you do want.
All in favor, who turned me?
Hello down there.
Hello? Aye?
Yes, aye.
Aye.